I'd like to call the order to the 1,447th meeting of the President and Board of Trustees for the Village of Machesney Park, the 16th day of April. Please rise for invocation given this evening by Rodney Lyndzendorf, Firstborn Ministry, and please stand, remain standing for Pledge Allegiance led by Trustee Joe Sykes.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless these proceedings tonight, Lord. We ask you to bless us with a spirit of unity, Lord, that we work together to better our community, Lord, that though we may not agree on everything, let us come and share our views in a way that builds up, not tears down, Lord. Help us to remember that every issue has two sides. Lord, we thank you, and we praise you, and we worship you. We ask you to bless our community, our village, our state, and our country. In Jesus' name, amen.
In our name. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will clerk please take roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Sykes.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
We have a quorum. While we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 2nd public hearing for the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget and board meeting of April 2nd. So amend.
Second.
The motion is second, are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next we have treasurer's report from Michelle Johansson, Finance and HR Manager, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report as of April 9th, 2018 reflected the total of all funds to be $10,319,267. In addition, the village has collateralized in excess of the 110 requirement, 110% requirement as outlined in the investment policy. A copy of the report is available at the back of the room. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. While we entertain a motion to approve, accept the treasurer's report. So amend.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasurer's report has been approved. Next we'll have communications from Lori Mitchell. But before we start with the proclamation, I'd like to make a comment or two. It appears that we have numerous people that would like to speak on item 11A, Williams Park, William Park Boating Parking Issue. I appreciate everybody coming out, and everyone that wants to speak toward this issue will get a chance right after our proclamation. I have a chance since the last meeting on this to talk to residents concerned about the noise, trash, drinking out there in this park, and also those who do not want to see the option of beaching their boats and enjoying the sandy beach area taken away. I am now encouraged that our boating community has taken notice and there is interest in more self policing. With that, I for one would like to give them a chance and would encourage the rest of the board to wait on putting any boat parking restrictions in place. I don't think any of the trustees would want to take away a fun option for our boating community, and we have to vote this down tonight to give this a chance to occur. I would hope our boating community could form a neighborhood watch program to clean up and maintain the Williams Park area.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a proclamation this evening. Gina Meeks is here, so we're pleased with that, and the proclamation is for, okay, Rockford United Labor Workers Memorial Day, and Mayor Johnson will be presenting it, and Trustee Sykes will be reading the proclamation this evening.
Whereas every year more than 10,000 American workers are killed on the job, and whereas tens of thousands more are permanently disabled, and whereas millions are injured, and whereas another 100,000 workers die from cancer, lung disease, or other diseases related to toxic chemical exposure to, at work, and whereas concerned Americans are determined to prevent these tragedies by organizing Workers Memorial Day on April 28th, a day chosen by the unions of the AFL-CIO as a day to remember these victims of workplace injuries and disease, renewing our efforts to seek stronger safety and health protections, better standards and enforcement, and fair and just compensation, rededicating ourselves to improving safety and health in every American workplace. Now therefore, the mayor and board of trustees of the Village of Machesney Park hereby proclaim April 28th, 2018 as Workman's Memorial Day in Machesney Park in recognition of workers killed, injured, and disabled on the job.
Thank you so much. I just want to say that we will hold this event on April 27th, that's Friday, April 27th, at 5:00 PM at the EJZG building in downtown Rockford, and I hope you all can attend to recognize the men and women who have died on the job. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Gina. And at this time, we have several people that have registered to address the board regarding the agenda item, the closing of Williams Park. The first speaker is Chip Gamble. If you would limit your comments to three minutes, sir, we'd appreciate it, thank you, because there are several other people that'd like to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me here. I am a resident of Machesney Park for 13 years. I've owned boats for 25 years. This is my third house on the water. My last house was on a park, right next to a park, so I understand what it's like to be next to a park, but I never had a problem with it because it was a lot of fun. I have three children, one of them is five years old, and if this ordinance goes through, I don't get a chance to tell my son we can go there and let him play in the sand. With that, what I've done, being part of the Rock River Homeowners Association, we put up a Facebook post that has got over 12,000 hits and views and shares. On top of that, I have some documentation here as a petition. Right now I have 300 and, or 434 signatures with 442 as of a couple of minutes ago. If you like these, I can share these with you. I agree that, yes, there could be issues, self policing would be nice, but I would like you guys to reject this at this point based on just the social media, what we're seeing, and let us take a look as a group to see what we can do to make it safer and better for everybody.
Thank you, sir. And I'll take the petition if you'd like.
There's three houses.
Thank you very much.
Next we have Mr. Steve Lucas.
My name is Steve Lucas. I've lived on the Rock River for over 30 years. Before that, I would come out with my family on weekends to enjoy the river like hundreds of families do every chance they can on a nice summer day. The Village of Machesney Park accepted the donation of Williams Park from the Rockford Park District in 1988. Section 1 of that article states that the park is to be used for recreational/leisure park purposes. This is what 99% of the people that use the park use it for. Now the Village of Machesney Park wants to renege on their word and not allow boats to park on the beach. Because of a neighbor not liking the noise people make while enjoying a fun day on the river, this is like a neighbor of the Rockford Speedway wanting to stop cars from racing on Saturday night due to noise. All of us that bought river property know that 365 days in a year, there's going to be a few days that are filled with boats, kids on inner tubes screaming and having fun. There are only two public park beaches on the entire Rock River in our area, Shorewood Park and Williams Park. Both are full of boats every warm weekend, families having fun, and sales tax dollars being collected by local municipalities. The village thinks this ordinance will be a cure for a neighbor and stop the endless phone calls to authorities. Guess what? The only thing this ordinance will do is keep the law-abiding families, moms, dads, grandparents, grandkids, from having a place to stop and stretch their legs. The bad apples will still stop at night and be the cause of the problem. The phone calls of complaints will still come in. The real solution here is not to close the park to boaters, but to develop access to the park with a culvert pipe over the creek. There's probably grant money that is available to do this if you would spend the time to research this option, not take the easy way out and punish 99% of the park users who are not the problem. The only thing this ordinance does is discriminate against boaters that want to park on the beach of a public park. People can still walk to the beach from land or anchor their boats on the river and swim into the park. By swimming into the beach, you open yourself up to more danger and liability than if you keep things the way they have been for the past 40 years. I ask that you vote on this ordinance separately so that all of these boaters and voters know exactly where you stand on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Next is Rod Chamber.
Well, I didn't come prepared at all. I didn't plan on speaking, but I'm an avid boater. I also snowmobile, motorcycles, all sports, we all have our bad eggs. I beach on this Williams Park every time I'm out boating, and I see people picking up stuff, I see bottles that do get broke, I see people policing themselves. Does everything get picked up? Probably not. But I think, as was just said, the majority of the people that use this park are responsible people, and if there's a noise problem, there's gotta be a law on the books for ordinances after a certain time at night. I feel like enforce it and take care of the problem and, you know, let the good people still enjoy the park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. John Pol, I believe.
All right, I didn't come prepared either, but I will say that I've lived 38 years in Roscoe, right on the river. My two children have crawled in their diapers on that park. All my relatives, they all enjoy the river, we all go down there all the time, all our friends, everybody's there, and the other gentleman before me made a clear point. You're talking about 1% of the 100% of people that use that park, and for you to discriminate against us boaters for that 1%, you really need to look at what you're questioning here tonight, because don't destroy a good thing. And my 38 years in Roscoe didn't be, my boating career began at 18 when I was in Rockford, you know, and we've always used this park. There's never been a problem there. Yeah, you got some bad eggs, you got bad eggs all around Machesney Park, but don't take one area, that little Williams Park, and destroy a good thing. I mean, I can't count the number of times I had to not go there because all my other friends are lined up and you can't get in there, you know, and now you just want to make it all go away and, you know, I can't understand how anybody could even bring this before a vote like this. There's 1%, 1% is your problem, you know, and you have ordinances as far as the noise goes. You can shut them down at 10 o'clock at night, but I mean, what's the difference? If you shut Williams Park down, the people anchor, like Steve and the other guys have said, they'll anchor there and they'll still be able to swim in, they'll play their music on the river. You're not gonna stop that, so I don't see a reason why that you would even entertain closing this, you know, and about the trash? If that's a public park and we're, you know, we're paying tax dollars, why don't you put two trash cans there and help out? You got public works, you know, I'm sure if there was trash cans there, but I have seen my own son pick up other people's stuff, put it in his boat, either drop it at my house or take it back to his, and I've done the same. I'm sure there's plenty of other people that do. We don't want to walk on busted glass, you know, and we want it to stay clean, we enjoy it.
Thank you, sir.
I guess that's all I can tell you.
Next is Mr. Curtis Jones.
Hi, thank you for having me. I am not a resident of Machesney Park, but during a normal April to September, November, I pretty much live on your river. I very much so enjoy Williams Park. We've had a great time there, me, my daughters, and my bride. We haven't had many issues out there, seen many issues, other than the occasional noise violation, or noise ordinance violation that a police officer will stop out for. It's pretty rare, weekends. We don't live here, but we come out here to boat and to enjoy the river and see most of these fine people, and if Williams Park wasn't open, the only other spot that we have is the Ski Bronx Beach, I forget the name. Shorewood. Most times during the weekends, that's closed. They're doing practice or they have some event going on and you can't go there during most times. It would greatly discourage us from coming out here to your river, spending our money for gas and food, and we're here every day if the sun's shining, we're on that river. It would keep us here instead of Rock Lake in Wisconsin, or Delabin, or Geneva, and we would greatly appreciate if you'd keep it open and allow us to spend our time with our families there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Sean Heer.
Thank you, and I've never met anybody say it right, so you're good. I just want to bring up that what this beach is, is this beach is way more than just a place where individuals gather. It is a place where all of us come and become a family, a family for a day. This beach is a place where I met one of my good friends, Nick, and one of my best friend, Adams, and then we have Maskey that allows all the kids on the beach to run and play and jump off his boat and just have the time of their lives. Most of these guys behind me, if they saw me actually out on my boat, know me as the quacky guy that always builds a little fire and cooks grill, or cooks food on a hot iron grill, and plenty happy to share and spread it around. This beach is a lifestyle. It's a lifestyle for all of our kids, where they can all get together and know each other and play, and, I mean, friendships and families and memories, and just like Mr. Poli and his son Nick, we have generations of fathers coming out on their boats and kids coming out with them on their boats, and just generation after generation have enjoyed this beach. I've been a boater now for 13 years and a father for nine, and all of my kids, two of which have been literally newborns on this beach. The only one I wish that hasn't been is my son that was born in December, and heck, he was only a few months old by the time he first saw it. And my daughter, the minute I told her that this was even a discussion, the first thing that came out of her mouth is, Daddy, we're not gonna get to build alligators. One of our favorite things to do when we come out during the week when there's not a lot of people there is we build a gigantic 10-foot-long alligator in the sand, and it's just her most cherished thing to do. And like a lot of these people say, there's only two spots on the whole river capable of this, and the one gentleman's exactly correct. You have Wednesday nights and Fridays and Ski Bronx practices, Shorewood, a third of the time is closed to public access. So that's all I gotta say, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. And last is Nick Poli.
How you guys doing? As you heard, Sean's my buddy. I grew up on the beach, I was on the beach when I was a kid, my whole life. Nothing a whole lot has changed with Party Island, Pea Island, whatever you guys want to call it. I'm there almost every weekend, any nice day, I'm there. I pick up stuff, I pick up trash, I always try to tell people, you know, keep it calm, respectful, you know. Alls I can say is, I want my generation, my future generation, be able to enjoy the same thing I was able to enjoy. We are a huge family, we are a huge boating community, and the nice thing is you can go there, everyone's family, and I just wish you guys would take the chance and hopefully save this Party Island. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next we'll have the warrant, trustee Aaron Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Administration and Finance Committee met this evening and we had a warrant totaling $112,455.20. I'd like to make a motion for its approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second, approve the bills? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Bills are approved. Next on the agenda is administrative reports. I worked at the Northern Illinois Food Bank, Mayor's Day myself, Rockford Mayor McNamara, Belleville Mayor Chamberlain, Village President Rick Warham of Davis Junction helped box all different flavors of cereal. We packed 10,260 pounds of food in two hours that provided 8,550 meals for hungry neighbors in Northern Illinois. On February 13th, I attended and manned the booth for CBS, the Village of Machesney Park, for the Oak Street Health Spring Fair in the J.C. Penney Building. Even though the weather did not cooperate, we still had a nice turnout for the event, held for the benefit of seniors in our existing area and give them information for various different vendors. I'd like to thank Colleen Vivian from Oak Street Health who organized this event. The village has been fortunate over the many years since our incorporation in 1981 to have our police service provided under a contract with the Winnebago County. In normal years, the village has seen inflationary costs for such services. However, as we heard earlier this evening, significant increases, changes in terms are being requested by the county. It would be prudent and appropriate at this time to take a closer look at all, any and all alternatives that we may be available for the village, for the, providing the police services going forward. This could simply be a change in our current relationship with the county, or it could involve exploring other options. I am tonight announcing the creation of an ad hoc working committee to review our current police services contract and to explore other alternatives which may be available for the providing of the police services to the village. I am anticipating bringing forward names from the committee at the next board meeting. Continuing on with administrative reports, next would be Attorney Tom Green.
I have no report tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next would be Finance and Human Resource Manager, Michelle Johansson.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Community Development Director, James Richter.
Thank you, Your Honor, just a couple of quick things. You may recall that at the, last year at a PISC meeting, trustee Kidd inquired about the rules for RV parking in residential zoning districts. During that discussion, trustee Bailey had also asked about other vehicle parking such as horse trailers and things, and the rules for those. As a result of those discussions, we were asked to take a look and revisit the residential parking regulations. Just want to let you know that in May or June, we'll be presenting the results of our research, and we'll be using a number of visuals to present that to you, so that'll be coming soon. Also, Governor Rauner recently signed Public Act 100-585 regarding small cell wireless regulations, and this allows for the placement of small wireless antenna along public rights of way and properties that are zoned commercial or industrial. Small cell or micro wireless facilities equipment really is limited to small equipment, 24 inches long, 15 inches wide, and then an antenna attached there too, not to exceed 11 inches. The legislation does provide for the village to have some regulations over those, to require permits, but overall, there's, there are limitations as to the rules that the villages can put in place. It certainly doesn't allow us for them, to prohibit them altogether. Excuse me, we don't have any current applications for small cell wireless equipment, but we anticipate that application will come forward in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Superintendent of Public Works, Chad Hunter.
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Village Engineer, Chris Dopkins.
No report this evening, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Student Liaison, Tamara Hiccup.
Thank you. Harlem 9th Grade Campus will be merging with the main campus in two years. Happy I'm out of there now. And the junior/senior prom was this past Saturday at the Tabala Center, and it was really fun. Also, this Friday, the girls varsity track team won the Rock Island Meet, and it didn't seem like a big deal, but it's the first time we ever won it in 33 years, and we actually beat a state champion team by 20 points, so it was really cool.
Next would be Public Safety Supervisor Lieutenant Pete Delpro.
Good evening. During the month of March, the sheriff's police in Machesney Park made 1,302 community contacts. We conducted 802 traffic stops, and 33 vehicles were tagged as inoperable. That's all for tonight.
Thank you so much. Next would be Committee and Trustee Reports. Does any trustee have a report this evening? Trustee Wilson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to welcome Mod Pizza and KFC to the 173 corridor. It's great to see how busy they've both been since they've reopened, and Mod Pizza opening new. Also, the Harlem Foundation, the Harlem Scholarship Foundation is going to be awarding $40,000 in scholarships this year. It was great to be part of the process in selecting the students that are going to be receiving those scholarships. We've got some great kids that are Huskies this year, and they're gonna go on and do some great things for us and make us proud. Also had a chance to be part of the Red Shoe Run on Saturday. Again, that's organ donor awareness, and they had record crowds even though the winds were at 45 miles per hour, so good to see owner, donor awareness going on there with the Red Shoe Run. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Trustee Kidd?
The Public Safety Committee met this week, and we have two items. I'll be forward to the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Hearing none, next would be Consent Agenda. Would the staff present all items to be concerned on the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of Item A, Ordinance 1318. This is to authorize the Second Amendment to the Fiscal Year 1718 Budget, final reading. Item B, Ordinance 1518, for the adoption of the Fiscal Year 1819 Annual Budget, final reading. Item C, Ordinance 1618, disposal of village property no longer necessarily, necessary to the operation of the village, final reading. Item D, Resolution 17R18, revision of the investment policy to update the list of authorized financial institutions. Item E, Resolution 18R18, appropriation for the MFT budget for the Fiscal Year 1819. Finally, Item F, Resolution 19R18, authorized purchase of a John Deere Backhoe Loader. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Were there any items the trustee would like removed from the consent agenda to be considered Hearing none, the consent agenda has been accepted as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So amend.
Second.
Motion is second, will clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Consent agenda has been approved. Next would be unfinished business. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1218, amend Chapter 29, Article 2 of the Village Code Regarding Williams Park Boat Parking. I'll entertain a motion to approve. So amend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor. Since the more extensive report was given at the first reading, I'll just give the abbreviated, which is, this is a simple amendment to Chapter 29, Article 2 of the Village Code, which would prohibit boat parking along the shores of Williams Park. It carries with it a fine between $50 and $200, and I'm open for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Trustee Kidd?
I'll be voting no on this issue. There's three reasons why. Number one, since 1988, the Village of Machesney Park has never improved anything on Guy Williams Park. Number two, if we have the capability of engineering roads and streets, selling six acres of lands for $10 to be developed, we should be able to develop some type of emergency and safety access road to Guy Williams Park. And the third reason why is because as a child growing up on the river on Marquette and Shore, I enjoyed the island. I understand what many of you guys have come through, but we should be mindful, just like my parents taught me, pick up after ourselves and be kind and courteous to our neighbors. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Any other trustee, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Wilson?
I'll be voting no as well, Your Honor, and I want to thank everybody I'll be voting no as well, Your Honor, and I want to thank everybody for being here and voicing your opinion. It's good to see that democracy still works, and it's great to have a full house here tonight, so thank you all so much.
Any, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Beck?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also will be voting no to this evening. I think we have ordinances that are on books right now. I think we ought to, we need to probably meet with the homeowners association group and the sheriff's department, figure out some way we can take and police the 1.5%, 2% of the people that are causing this trouble.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Personally, that's exactly what trustee Beck just said, that I firmly believe that we can get some type of neighborhood type of watch to help police the Williams Park and maintain it for the good of the people, and I personally will vote no also. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, will clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Kidd.
Nay.
Wilson.
Nay.
Bailey.
Nay.
Beck.
Nay.
Sykes.
Nay.
Smith.
Nay.
Mayor Johnson.
Nay.
No ayes and seven nays.
Ordinance 1218 has failed. Next under would be New Business. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 1118, zoning map amendment, Commercial General District to Industrial General District for the property at PIN number 80817451018, 1051 and 1060 North Second Street, first reading.
So made.
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you may know, Henning Inc. is currently undergoing two expansions on their existing manufacturing facilities off Alpine Road simultaneously to accommodate the company's great growth. They have 5.8 acres under contract along North Second. Staff has been in discussions with Henning and their development team about the company's success and their future needs, and obviously, the acquisition of these properties are going to facilitate the company's growth on contiguous land. Interestingly enough, the properties are zoned CG Commercial General. The applicants have requested to rezone the properties to IG, which is General Industrial. The request received unanimous recommendations for approval from Planning and Zoning and the Planning and Economic Development Committee, and really was non-controversial. The zoning classifications for the surrounding properties are consistent with that class, and so it makes sense to accommodate the applicant's request. Henning's attorney had requested to expedite the approval process, though it wasn't critical. This would assist them in closing on the property in an expeditious manner and likely accommodate their construction schedules, so they have asked for a double reading, or rather, to waive the rules and read both approvals tonight at this board meeting. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
It's passed for first reading now. I'll entertain a motion to waive the rules to bring back Ordinance 121118 for second reading.
So made.
Second.
Motion and a second. Have our staff report, is there any discussion?
You just go to the board.
Okay. Clerk, please take roll call.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays to waive the rules.
Okay. Bring it back for second reading, Ordinance 1118, zoning map amendment, Commercial General District, Industrial General District to property PIN number 0817451018, 1051, 10601, North Second Street, second reading. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussions? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays. Or seven ayes, sorry.
Thank you. Ordinance 1118 has been approved. Next, under New Business, I'll entertain a motion to authorize notice of termination under paragraph 16 of the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement for the Police Services.
So made.
Second.
Motion and a second is, may I have staff report?
Yes, thank you. As the mayor reported earlier, since our incorporation in 1981, our police services have been provided under a contract with the county of Winnebago. I think that I'm safe in saying, and you would agree, that the deputies that have served and continue to serve the village are second to none. We've had great service. However, in normal years, the village will see inflationary costs of 50, $60,000 for wages going up and so forth, but this year is a little different in that the county has notified us of significant increases via changes in the terms to the contract. On April 10th, our attorney received draft changes to the terms of that contract from the county board chairman through the state's attorney's office. There are at least four major components of that contract that are changing. Our best estimate of the financial impact of those changes for next year's budget is that will add around $308,000 above and beyond the normal inflationary cost that we've provided for in the budget that you just adopted. If you add in the county's proposal to move dispatch services from the county to the city of Rockford, that increase, that total increases to $470,000. Given the significance of these, we feel that we have no choice but to exercise and essentially acknowledge the county's, I guess, request to terminate the contract, which provides for a 24-month notice. I think that the 24-month notice is reasonable, given that it's a big operation, both sides need time to make arrangements, shift positions, so forth. I'd open up for discussion, and also, if attorney agrees and has any comment on, you know, the termination portion of the contract, we'd be glad to hear that. Thank you. If I might?
Trustee. I'll just comment briefly. I think the most important point here is this is a two-year notice, so the mayor has identified earlier in the meeting that he's going to get, put together an ad hoc working committee to review what our options are. Those options may be to stay with the county. I mean, it may simply be to modify the current agreement with the county, but I think that committee will naturally look at what other options are available, whether it can be outsourced or development of a force or partner with other opportunities. So, you know, it'll take many months, maybe a year, to do that, and if we decide to go a different direction, you don't want to then have to send a two-year notice. You want to be on your way, so I think that's important. I will comment that the change in terms that have been forwarded to the village will be the subject of negotiation. I think they've pushed the, their changes beyond what they're allowed to do as the current contract is written, so there will be some discussion back and forth with the administrative staff and the team here as we meet with the county. I'm sure we'll come to terms on it. We do all want to work together, and I think the village is very grateful for the service the county's provided, and I think the county is appreciative of the opportunity to serve Machesney Park and to have those officers out here, so that's about all I have. We'll work on this process together.
Thank you.
Thank you, attorney. Trustee Kidd?
I am disappointed at Frank Haney and the state's attorney's office. It's always best to come to the table and negotiate. I'll be voting no tonight on the authorization of terminating the contract with the two-year notice, because I think it's important that the ad hoc committee speak, give recommendations, talk to the public first before the board executes any decision. It's not that I'm against shopping and looking at the options. I think the options should be presented first, and then we should terminate the contract if needed. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No one? Okay. Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Nay.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes and one nay.
Motion to authorize notice of termination under paragraph 16 of Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement for Police Services has been approved. Next is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board for the good of the village? Please state your name and approach, yep, thank you.
Yeah, I'm John Polley. I'd just like to thank this committee for listening to the boating community and doing what was right. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Beck?
Somebody else back there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Chuck Barber and 1125 Key West Drive. I live right across from P Island, and I would also like to thank everybody on how they voted this evening. I would hope that in the future, we can work together to make Williams Park a full-fledged park, and I was wondering if there would be someone that you, we could have a go-to person to present ideas to, and to work with, helping clean it up and all that sort of thing. Would the village be putting somebody in charge of that, or?
We can decide that later, but I mean, that is a good, I'll talk to you after, after the.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else want to address the board? Trustee Beck?
I'm also glad that this ordinance was defeated, and we've heard from plenty of the people here that actually use that park, that they're trying to police it and trying to clean it up and keep it right. It's always sad, like the one gentleman said, the 1% that's causing this problem. I also think that, and I have several people that are friends of mine who live on the river in the past, and their thing is that the sheriff never really does anything about the loud mouths and the drunks and the people that are causing the problem. They can buy and warn them and so on and so forth. I don't know that that's a fact or true fact, but the idea of it is, if you're doing wrong, if you're throwing litter on a beach and a village property, you're littering, and that's an offense. And so we need to, if it's controlled, because it's on the river and that's the only way you can get there, then I think the sheriff's river police should need to step up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next would be adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.